And the first thing we're gonna do is have the invocation. The Boy Scout troop, Troop Aide, I know y'all are here. And after the invocation, I'm gonna call you up to help us with the pledge of allegiance. But we got Bishop Slater. Would you please come up and give us the invocation? If anyone want, please stand.
Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this opportunity, for us to come together with the meeting of the minds. Father, we ask you to direct this great council. Father, give them clarity and sight beyond sight. Let them speak for the people. Let them stand, Lord, and charge them, God, with what they have been assigned to do. We brought them here, Lord, let them speak loud for us. Father, we thank you for the community that's represented. And most of all, Lord, we thank you for Goldsboro, the best city in this area. We thank you, God, for letting us rise to the top. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Bishop. Come back to see us. Okay, Troop Aide from New Hope, can you come up and help us with the pledge of allegiance, please? Just come right up here and just spread out right through here, and we'll place the flag when you get set up. All right, are y'all ready? Are y'all ready? All right, here's the flag right here. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young man. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we have roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Preston Aiken.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rodaway.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
We're all accounted for. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the work session or regular meeting of January 19th, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those three say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have public comment period. If anybody from the public, from the office would like to speak for up to three minutes, please come forward. Anybody coming? Yes, ma'am. If you will give our clerk your name and address, please, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening. I am Sylvia Barnes. I live at 1708 Laurel Street, here in this wonderful city of Goldsboro. I am here this evening to invite each one of you as elected city councilmen to the NAACP is sponsoring a meet the candidates on this coming Saturday evening at St. Mark's Church at 700 West Ash Street from 6:00 PM until 8:00. Hope that you be able to come and join us. Every name that will be on our ballot in March have been invited. We have had some calls and people are saying that they will come. This will be an opportunity for you to walk around and meet the people that will be on our ballot in March. And I do have a flyer for each one of you.
Okay, Ms. Barnes, let's repeat it now. Saturday, this Saturday, 6:00, St. Mark's Church. For anybody watching that might wanna, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you very much for including us.
How are you?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jevon Marie. I actually grew up here in Goldsboro, and I've been overseas serving in the military and pursuing professional endeavors for the past 12 years, but I'm back, hopefully for the next year at least. And I just wanted to bring up, I came in person last Thursday to share my surprise that there was no acknowledgement or recognition of either Martin Luther King's Day or Black History Month on the city website or social media. As you all know, social media is a very big force in community involvement, and I think it's a very important holiday. It's a national holiday and a national observance. And I think it would be beneficial to connect with and to educate and to include your constituents. And so I wanted to offer my services in coming up with content, if there's content that's needed. I have already passed on some information to Ms. Hobbs, who I met downstairs, and I just wanted to follow up because I had followed up on Friday and throughout the weekend, and nothing had been posted yet.
Well, it's very good of you to make us aware of our mistakes, and we will fix them. I'm sure we have information, and does she have your contact?
Yes.
So if we need anything else or more information, but we have folks that ought to be able to do that. But if we need more than I'm, and if you don't like what you see when you see something on there, then you can certainly come back and let us know.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you for telling us.
Thank you very much.
All right, anybody else wanna speak? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just came to support the, I gotta make sure I get my words right, the rezoning for Patrick Gallagher East-South.
Ma'am, we're gonna have a public hearing for that in a few minutes, and when we do that, you can come back up and tell us then.
So I get two chances?
You get two chances. So go ahead and get it right in your mind, you'll have another chance in a few minutes.
Can I appear like 10 or 20 minutes?
No, ma'am, you cannot. Thank you. I'm sure, anybody else like to speak? Okay, if not, we will close the public comment period, and we'll move to presentations. And we have the village, the folks from the village, our community organization here to speak to us. Good evening. How are you? Modern technology.
You know, it's beautiful.
And a prepared city manager, can't beat that, can you?
Is it loading? Yeah, okay. There it goes, okay.
Hi, my name is Zora Facen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Why don't you introduce everybody, so we know who everybody is?
My name is Zora Facen. I live here in Goldsboro. This is Tara Harris, Sage Powell, Charmaine Powell, Destin Jacobs, and Alonda Jacobs.
Okay.
Um, we are here on behalf of the village to present some information about our community. And we are an organization that focuses on our community and doing things for our community. And we incorporate all aspects of the community, working together to form an indestructible course of change. And we do that by facilitating learning experiences within our community, such as after-school programs and things, is that we have noticed some things in our community that we would like to bring to your attention.
Okay.
Um, we have partners that of other grassroots organizations, such as the Wart Warehouse, We Build in Broken Places, um, the Little Washington Growing Group, the Jaguars, and Wayne County Citizens for Better Schools. And we, and we help create food resources in our community. We do community beautification projects, which this relates to. We do mentoring in the community, and we engage through community action. Here are some of the things that we have done. We, here we are helping clean apartments and houses on Wayne Avenue. And we have done plenty of activities, such as this greenhouse that we have done over the years. And we're here today to bring to your attention about some of the things going on between Districts 1 and 3, about like the dirt roads, the dilapidated streets, sidewalks, and street lights and things of that. Here are some dirt roads that are in our community that we have noticed about, such as Greenleaf and Dewey Street, right here in Goldsboro. And here is East Basil Street, where it's close to where I live in this neighborhood, and Cadiz Street and on North James Street.
Okay.
Hello, councilman.
How are you doing?
Good.
My name is Sage. I've just, I've just recently moved to Goldsboro in 2014, and when I noticed down here wasn't a lot of sidewalks. As you guys can see, on Cadiz Street, it's basically dirty, and we don't have like a lot of sidewalks, and it's really unsafe for us to walk at nighttime. While neither be paved, um, it helps the appearance of the other neighborhood. It would promote respect for the community within the community. It would show that the cities cares about all aspects of the community. Studies show that when you change the environment, you change the way people think and feel. And it's like the dirt roads run in communities, like when kids wake up, they gotta look out the window and they see dirt roads, it's like it don't bring in a positive feeling. Like, it's knowing that your community looks bad, it make you feel bad 'cause your community isn't well upcut. And as you guys can see, downtown is real, oh, I'm sorry. You see downtown is real nice painted, and within a two-mile radius, like, it's basically not well upcut, like, it's nothing done, dirt roads, it look all messy. And it kinda sucks because the terrorists, the terrorists can come and view us, but the people that live here, like, we gotta look at this every day, and we feel as though that's, that's not right for us, 'cause we, we live in the community. And as you can see, you can see the water tower from all four pictures, and it's just not well kept. You start from, my sister's gonna speak now. Hello, councilman.
Hello. How you doing?
Very good. Um, Sage was saying about the streets, um, we look at the streets, and as impoverished people, we look at the streets, and we feel like we live in poverty, so then that will make people act as if they're living in poverty. But all that we wanna change, um, there's a lot of potholes in the streets, and that causes a lot of damage to our cars. And it also, um, makes it unsafe for people to drive on. And also, the, um, there are a lot of new drivers, and we require 10 hours of night driving. And as those potholes, it's very unsafe for us to drive 10 hours at night. And we cannot see those potholes, so you know, definitely cause accidents. Throughout District 1 and 3, there's very poor lights. Um, it's very nerve-wracking to be walking down a street corner, especially as a woman, and the lights go out, and something happens, nobody knows what happens, and that's just another mystery for Goldsboro to solve. And many people suffer from anxiety, and, um, we, we would like to promote that more people come outside and feel safe, which will allow people to engage more in a healthy fashion. As you can see, that's downtown street lights, and then within a 20-mile radius, pitch black. And it's very, you know, downtown got Christmas trees and lights all over. And then 20 miles away, there's dark.
Hello, how you guys doing today?
Good evening.
Um, one of the other things that we would like to do in our community to help promote positive attitudes is that Center Street area, we would actually like to turn that into a greenway. We feel that in an effort to better our community, creating that into a greenway would help bring a sense of pride and beauty amongst our residents. Now, that area is completely trashed with the junkyard nearby. And with the junkyard being nearby, it takes a lot away from the community as a whole. So if we could take a piece of that community and implement that project, by implementing that project, we would engage the community residents in positive interaction with each other, which is a big thing in our community, to get residents out to engage with each other, which will help reduce crime, because once we get to know each other, we can better engage each other to help protect our communities. Um, we also want to promote positive engagement with each other and bringing our youth into this situation. If they see that we are all trying, that'll help them try a little harder to have more positive attitudes in the community if they see we care. Um, this greenway would also promote healthy eating and exercise, because all community residents would reduce stress, and it will help promote better attitudes, which would help crime and violence in our communities. Now, we would like to, um, do raised garden beds, so we can grow healthy food as well as grow beautiful flowers, which we feel like Center Street connecting to White Down with downtown would lead right into the beauty that you guys are already putting together. So when people come into the city from 70 off Grantham Street, this end of Center Street is the first thing they see when they come into town. And seeing that junk ground in the eyes, so it really says a lot about the people in that community. And we do care about our community, so we want to show that we do care about our community by doing something different. Here's an example. There's a picture of what that middle of Center Street looks like, and as you see, you can see the water tower, you can almost see downtown. That's, uh, just a depiction of something that we possibly could do. We could fill the tracks with beautiful flowers, make the railway a walkway. We could even incorporate all of our young artists in the community, enhance them to do statues, different things that would bring a beauty to the community and bring it right on into what we're doing downtown to show that all aspects of the community care on the, on the same level. We would also like to talk about getting a sidewalk on the north side of George Street. Now, on the north side of George Street, that is where the highway comes in. And we, I have personally witnessed three major accidents. I watched a little boy get hit, fly 10 feet in the air, and fall in my front yard with his leg twisted backwards. I watched a little child fall up under a car riding a bike, and I watched two other young guys on bikes get hit by cars there, not to mention the older people I've seen get hit by bikes. Our community is right by Franklin Baker. We have a large community of people who walk and ride bikes to work. It would be very, very helpful to have a sidewalk where they could walk and ride bikes, because with the type of majority of people in our community that walk, these young children walk every day up and down those streets. And we gotta dodge cars, we gotta, I'm an adult, and it's hard for me to cross the street back and forth with people coming off that highway 55 miles an hour. We are a residential area. We do wanna work on getting that area's speed limit taken down, because it will be safer for everyone in the community. Um, and so these are just a few of the things that we wanna bring up. Um, and we wanna be able to work together in any way we can as a community effort to bring unity, positivity, and in community interaction to see that the city cares and the residents care. So that's what we have to present to you all today.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who is the spokesperson for this organization?
I am the spokesperson.
And Melissa has your name and contact information?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, you said you were primarily from District, from District 1 and District 3, correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, has you, have you ever reached out, tried to, I, I wanna know, um, when, when did you become an organization? Because I usually would like to know when.
Well, honestly, we started this organization in 2009. Um, I'm a business owner in District 1, and I've been living in North End between District 1 and 3 my whole life. I'm 34 years old. I've attended every Wayne County school here, um, and I've been here all my life, like I said. So we began this organization in 2009 as an effort to do something to our community, because we saw there was not a lot being done, and if you want something done, you get up and you do it.
Of course.
Ms. Jacobs, now you are coming to meet us tomorrow with Councilmember Williams, so we'll get in the weeds, I think a little more.
All right, thank you so much.
You know, I deliver meals on Meals on Wheels in that area, on Swan and James, and Center and Virginia and all that, so I'm very familiar. And listen, there are some fine folks who live back there.
Right, and it's a lot of elderly people, and that's why us younger community have to step up, because our elders can't get out and do what they were doing before. So that's why you see these young people, we're training them. So once we guys work together, we get our community back, we gonna make sure it stays there.
There you go.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all so much for coming.
For the village, she's one of our advisors for the village. And Mr. Dante Bunch is an advisor for us today. I think they wanna close out.
Of course.
Good evening.
Yeah. My name is Laura Crawford. Uh, I'm a lifelong resident of Goldsboro. I've lived on North End all my life. Uh, up on Center Street, where those houses are torn down now, that's where I used to live. Uh, I take my children and my grandchildren up there, and I could point out the houses from 901 to Center Street, all the way down to 923, because that's where I lived. And I wanna give these kids a hand for what they're trying to do as far as improving their community, because I've seen North End go down to where it looks like a third world country. It's blighted, very blighted. Our roads are, they're not roads anymore, and they are supposed to be maintained by the city of Goldsboro. You pull up a map, they're on the map. So the only thing I'm asking this council to do is to look at those kids, meet them halfway, and let them know that they are citizens of this city. Regardless of what you think, we do have some children that are trying to do some positive things, and they deserve to see some positive aspects of their lives.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Evening.
Thank y'all for the sign. But, um, the children, we're working really hard with the children. The children are trying their best to do what's right. We, we having a lot of problems with the lights. Uh, that's, that's what's promoting the crime. The crime seeks the dark. You know, when you put the light, it will stop the crime, it will, it will bring the crime down. You know, we have a lot of residents that call us, and we go, and some of them, they don't even feel safe with calling the police. But when they call us, they know we will show up, we will support them, we will help them, we will talk to them, we will show them the love that they need in the community. You know, so we need, we need y'all to really, really think about the lights, especially like Caroline Street and all of that. I mean, have y'all went up and down some of these streets? These streets look horrible. The, not just the streets, the, the houses, the community. And, and we, we could do it one by one, one house at a time, but we need help. So we're asking the city council for help. We asking for help for the, the roads, the dirt roads. I mean, this is 2016. We should be flying in cars right now, but still have dirt roads? That, that's, that's something that need to stop. We need to do our best to assist these children, so these children can see that they can count on somebody besides just us. 'Cause we're trying really hard to make sure that these children grow up right, that these children see what's right and understand what's right. But that's why it's called the village, because we need to do it as the village. We can't do it as one. One person can't get out here and show these children that this is right, and we're preaching to them and teaching to them that this is right, and then they go out in the world, and they seeing that, don't nobody care. We need to care as one. The lights need to be fixed bad. If, if you want, I invite each one of y'all, we could get in the car after this, and we go for a ride through these neighborhoods. You'll be okay, you riding with me. So we could ride through these neighborhoods, and you can see the, the crime when we ride through the dark neighborhoods. They gonna be standing out there. But if you ride down, uh, downtown, you're not gonna see that same element downtown, because it's lit it up, it's lit up very, very nice. They're not gonna come into the light, they gonna stay in the dark. So we need to just, just think about what the chi, what the children asking for. These are children that's asking for it. Us as the community, we're asking for it too. But the children see the same thing that us as grown people see. So then we know that's, that is a problem. So let's try to correct the problem soon as possible. We're trying to do it by ourselves with the children, but now we're asking the village to expand, that everybody come in, come together and help us do it.
Thank you. We hear you, and we will work, we will work with y'all tomorrow. We'll get in the weeds a little more, and we'll come up with a plan, and we care just like you care. We'll work on it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I do wanna say that, um, our newly-elected mayor, he took a tour with us, um, Stevens, and, um, also Foster, they all came, and they rode to the neighborhood. So they, they definitely have concerns, and the city manager, he took a, he took a trip with us too. So, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that we will get something done. I'm glad, you know, to see the young people involved, we need that. Thank you for your time, too.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm D.R. Halliday. I'm the planning director of the Speed Academy of the New Buffalo Soldiers. New Buffalo Soldiers is a youth organization that's coming to this city. We're getting churches to form boys' precision drill teams and drumming bugle corps, make them pull their pants up, get a haircut, shine their shoes, stand up straight, look in the eye and say yes, sir, and no, sir. It's time for the foolishness to cut out. I'm here tonight to say thank you to a, a young lady in this community who has consistently shown the importance of developing our young people. And I'd be, I'd like to ask her city councilman to come and present to her the first order that we're presenting, the Order of the New Buffalo Soldier. And I, if, uh, Councilman Williams will present to Ms. Jacobs. Ms. Jacobs has made consistently work with the young people about community. If you see her, you'll always see young people around here. And that's, that's a model that should be exemplified throughout this, throughout this city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, I think we're done with the village, and thank y'all very much for that. It's very moving. Um, it gives us plenty to do.
To think about, yeah.
All right, so next, we're gonna be the public hearings, Mr. Rupp, or Ms. Collins. Hey, ma'am, you've had all this time to get your preparation, so when we open it up, I just wanna be sure you know that.
Right.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen.
Good evening.
Item B on your agenda is Z116, Patrick Gallagher. The property is located on the east side of Leslie Street, between Mulberry Street and Walnut Street. The property has a frontage of 118 feet on North Leslie Street, a frontage of 166 feet on East Walnut Street, and a total area of approximately 2.3 acres. The present zoning classification is R9 residential, and the proposed zoning classification is general business conditional district to allow the development of an event center. Full development plans have been submitted, which will have to be approved in conjunction with the rezoning. As you can see, the property is indicated in the hatch area on the map. Mulberry Street is to your north, Leslie Street to your west, and Walnut Street is to your south. The property is currently a private residence for the applicant and his wife. The applicant proposes renting space within two structures on the property for private events such as weddings, birthday parties, fundraisers, and similar activities. The city's comprehensive land use plan indicates high-density residential development for this property, which is indicated in the indicated in the brownish gold area on the map on the screen. And this is equivalent to city's multifamily R6, R9, and R12 residential zones. Again, this is the property indicated in the red hatch area. The requested conditional district zone will require that detailed development plans be reviewed and approved by the planning commission and city council. The applicant has submitted a site plan which illustrates the intended use of the property. The property is currently occupied by a number of one-story structures containing the following areas and it, and existing or proposed uses. There is a 5,467 square foot building which serves as the applicant's primary dwelling, a 2,251 square foot existing building proposed to serve as the main event center, a 1,200 square foot existing guest house maintained for event, uh, invited guests of the applicant, there's an existing pool house, existing greenhouse, and an existing 3,000 square foot metal building used for storage. The applicant contends that the site is underutilized given the amenities and structures available on the property. The applicant's dwelling in the proposed event center is currently accessed by a driveway on Leslie Street which leads to a parking area for approximately eight vehicles adjacent to those buildings. There is also a connected driveway on Lionel Street which extends through a 20-foot wide access easement to the storage building at the rear of the site. An unused concrete drive extending from Walnut Street is to be removed and covered with a new parking area. The applicant proposes the installation of a parking lot containing 70 spaces assessed from Walnut Street through two driveways. Based on one space required per 32 square feet of assembly area, a total of 70 parking spaces are required. The entire site is encompassed by either fencing or masonry wall. Interconnectivity is not shown and the applicant believes that this would not be necessary and has requested a modification of that requirement. A type C 20-foot wide buffer would be required along the northern, eastern, and southern property lines. Existing vegetation will be retained as much as possible to satisfy most of these requirements. The applicant has requested a modification of the buffer requirement within two locations along the northern and southern property lines, which currently do not contain existing vegetation. Vehicle surface area plantings are required for the new parking lot along East Walnut Street. While not shown on the plans, appropriate landscaping will be required to meet the vehicle surface area. The following modifications have been requested by the applicant. Modification of the main building side setback requirement from 15 to 2 feet along the southern property line adjacent to residential use, a modification of the location of the metal accessory building at the rear of the property from 5 to 0 feet from all exterior property lines, modification of the interconnectivity requirement, modification of the type C 20-foot wide landscape buffer along the northern property line between the guest house and the metal accessory structure used for storage, and a modification of the type C 20-foot wide landscape buffer between the main building and the adjacent dwelling to the south. At this time, no action is necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on March 7th. And just to clarify the location of the main assembly area, it's this larger portion here on the site plan. And then this longer portion of the, um, main building is the applicant's primary dwelling.
Does council have any questions, Ms. Collins? Okay, thank you, Jeff. If not, this is a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak for or against, please come up and do so. And I hope you have the condensed version this time.
I have so much time for you.
You take all the time you need.
It's short. Um, my, I'm representing, my name is Judy Bright and I'm representing my husband, Tony Bright, and he's out tonight. Y'all don't need to know that. And, uh, just wanted, we live on the corner of Walnut and Leslie Street. We moved in 89 to what was originally the Cobb House, uh, built there. And, uh, some of you who are more wise would remember the Cubs. And Ms. Bessie Bell across the street, they moved there back in the early 1900s when it was country. And so we've seen a lot of changes in our neighborhood. And I would just like to say that this is a wonderfully, uh, happy, happy proposal because it brings more richness into our neighborhood and it brings celebration in our, into our neighborhood. And sometimes, uh, we see a deterioration with people leaving and, you know, uh, coming in. So it is nice to see this and this celebration. So this is in support of that. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a good night. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir, mercy. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Taj Polak. I'm a resident of 706 East Mulberry Street. Uh, my profession is a fireman with the city of Goldsboro. And all my days at work, throughout the night, I'm alarmed with the bell and the sound of sirens. And when I come home, I want to relax. Um, I've been a homeowner on this block for about approximately 11 years. And about seven years ago, we had a, a group that had moved in. I don't know if they were renting or renovating, but for about a two-week period, they had a live mariachi band in the backyard at 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning. Now, it's being proposed that there's a store on Ash Street that's gonna be open until 3 o'clock. Well, during this time of the year, it's not as much foot traffic. Um, but when it gets warm, there tends to be a lot more foot traffic. So if I have this in my backyard, which is actually not a brick masonry wall, I have a picket fence and there's a swimming pool in my backyard. Actually, this summer, I mean, I love the sound of kids playing, but at 2 and 3 o'clock when they have events, uh, you know, there's no cutoff time. They think that things are gonna stop at a certain time, but actually, same things tend to run over. We're talking about proposing to have a 70, uh, car parking lot in a residential area in my backyard. And like I said, with that kind of event taking place, I want there to be serious consideration with this moving forward. Because we have a sandwich hot dog shop that's gonna be on Ash Street with the tenants of Mulberry Street. And directly behind us, there's gonna be, uh, proposing to have an event center. So we're gonna be sandwiched between two high-traffic areas. Um, and I just want you guys to take consideration of this. There's already a lot of dilapidated properties across on, as you know, on the Piggly Wiggly side, uh, there's a lot of drug areas. Um, I don't know how this is gonna enhance the neighborhood. I think it, it would be beneficial to the owners of the property, but it's not really considering the, uh, the, the area and the people that live in the area. So I just want to bring that to you guys' attention and hope you'll take, yes, sir.
Mr. Polak, what was your address?
706 East Mulberry. And like I said, I don't have any, uh, fence or, or masonry fence. I have a picket fence. My little yorker can almost climb through the, you know, the, uh, dog ear, uh, fencing. So it's not, it's not any noise barrier there. It's, it's a wide-open area. So I just want you to take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, I'll be there.
Patrick Gallagher, I did this video for you, so I'll give you an idea of what's light. Does it have sound to that? Can you make it do sound? Might face up to the control room. Well, I can talk it up. Um, as you see, going in from the front with the gate. And, uh, that's the main entrance coming in. Um, and there's the, come in, fountain right there. Take a reading area. And seating. Stream, projector, ceiling. Light in the picture. Lights up there. You have a music hall, sound system. Go in the front area. Just a little spillover up here if you want to get away from the noise of the party. And then, here's the entrance I showed you before. That is easily accessible to handicap. They get parked there, can ramp up onto this tile and get right in. Now I'm gonna take you to where the closed parking is gonna be. And out the back. And now we're gonna go outside to show the back where the closed parking is gonna be and give another perspective of. Parking's gonna be for the majority of the people. And I think Carnegie Civil Engineering has designed it to a lot of about 55 parking spots. And then spill over here, traversing around this way, through numerous gates. Even have a gazebo on the back of the property here that people could congregate at if they needed to. And, uh, one of the azaleas that'll be blooming in multiple different colors come, yes, springtime. And back here is, uh, we're looking at Lionell is to the left and Walnut is straight back here. And you can see the natural growth, uh, barrier. It's been around for a long time. Being today is January 26th. Not a very green time of year, but you can see a lot of the, uh, a lot of natural cherry bushes growing up there. And, uh, it's really wiggly. You can barely see through the brush there. And then through here, this is one of the entrances we have through Walnut. And then the property to the And there's a corser curb cut here. And we're here on Walnut now. And this is the other curb cut I'm posing to show you. This is right here. And this is the other, uh, property. So we take away this fence, so, um, help this view gives the, uh, viewers a better, uh, idea of what we're proposing to do with the property here at, uh, 112 North Leslie and Scott's Bar. Thank you for your time. So, that gives, that gives the council members an idea of what we're trying to accomplish. Uh, that's four blocks east of us here. We're just trying to kind of bring up what Billy Scott had started years ago. I'm sure it was quite a glorious place in its days. He had governors there and dignitaries from Europe. I'm sure my wife and I have never come to that level, but we've had, had a mayor or two there. And we're just trying to show the potential of that facility. Um, it's a lot more than we will ever use ourselves. And, uh, the statement that, uh, the lady there had read that, uh, the site is underutilized given its amenities and structures available on the property. Um, we just see so much potential to do so much more than we ever could dream of doing ourselves. To avail that to the citizens of Goldsboro to have events or parties and things there. And we won't be, there won't be a bar by any means. You can't just drive up there and hop in. We're gonna have a police presence on every designated event. I've already been in touch with police force. It doesn't matter how much it's gonna cost me, that's doable. Um, there'll be lighting on the property. So the other gentleman was mentioning about lighting up the area, scaring out the criminals. Well, that area's a rough area. I mean, I've called numerous times. I hear gunshots. I took, uh, Mr. Stevens' advice, says when you hear gunshot, call us and say where you heard it from. I must've called 10, 11 times. Calls are getting less frequent, thank God, but, um, so we just see that as just being such a, a win-win situation. Um, and the parking will be in the Walnut Street, which will be away from where it was once before. There was a church that grew up there. And they, you know, they weren't, they weren't right to be there and they were, they were allowed, not allowed to stay there. So we're trying to go the legal route, right route, come before the council members and just say, this is what we like to do. And that's our proposal. So.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Are you saying you got parking for 55 people coming off Walnut Street, uh, coming off Walnut Street, right?
Right, yes, sir. Well, that's what Carnegie proposed.
And is that the only way in, only way out for that parking?
Right, that would be at this point in time.
All right, are you gonna have outside functions outside your building?
Not proposed, no. We're gonna use the ballroom, that's gonna be it.
Just the ballroom. And how many people you think you could fit in the ballroom?
We haven't been given a number on that yet. We were told.
200, 100?
Oh, no, maybe, maybe 100 or, see, when we have, I've been in touch with the civil engineer and he will give me the lowdown exactly how many people we can have on the property. At this point, I would be guessing, so.
And what are your hours?
It would just, uh, evenings, most likely. It would be an afternoon wedding.
But evenings how late?
I wouldn't go.
Cause I don't think the gentleman wants to hear a mariachi band at 2:00 in the morning.
No, no, yeah, I don't think that. Uh, we could probably put a cutoff like midnight, 12:30. I mean, people getting married, they might want to stick around with their wedding party and whatnot. Uh, so, but I would be open for you guys tell me what we can do and we'll work with that. My wife and I are very, we're willing to hear what will work. We want to make it work. It's a beautiful place. And just us and our five godchildren, it's not being well used.
And you said you were gonna have police at every event?
Yes, sir. I've already been touched. It's affordable rate. Uh, police presence will be on. They told us about the ABC license or anything like that, how they'll address that, so.
This is my only, this is my only real concern. Like I said, I was weighing the pros and cons of it. This is my only con. Um, in regards to having ABC permit, um, the potential of rezoning, um, if you were ever to potentially sell the property, we can never go back and rezone it for it being residential because it would always be rezoned for entertainment purposes. So if you were there to potentially sell it to someone who wanted to turn it into such a club kind of atmosphere, it'd be always in that state of mind, state of frame. So what is the guarantee that that would never, I mean, is there any kind of guarantee or modification for that never happening or?
I think Sally mentioned, uh, that it's a GC DC. There'll be, uh, some stipulation put upon it that you can't go above and beyond the certain constraints you try to put upon it. The general district, some other two letters I thought was gonna be placed upon it to put it, you know, stricter. Maybe Jimmy could help me on that.
If it's rezoned to conditional use district, whatever use that this gentleman gets, that if he sells it, somebody else can come in and do the same use.
That's all they can do, is the same use.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to know.
That's, yeah, that's what I've been understanding, so.
That just, that way my con right there. So that was just wanting to know.
Sure thing, Mr. Stevens.
I have a little bit of history with that property. And I see you hadn't painted, you hadn't changed the paint scheme that Billy put in.
No, it's a very expensive paint scheme in the ballroom. It's just thousands of dollars. That's not wallpaper, that's paint. All those loops and hoops and just.
Mr. Scott was my uncle.
Was he now? Oh, I heard that. Yes, Mr. Scott, yeah. So.
I think I've talked to you.
Possibly have, yeah. Just to, to make good of that, we want to do a history on that and give out and kind of go back to Fort Fear. History and De Fort is the German name of it. And his connection with Germany's got German writing through the ball, uh, kitchen, if you recall that. So we're just trying to capitalize on that. And just make good of a good place. And not to just ourselves, but to many other people. So.
Any more questions?
I, I think the only real thing that I was just wondering is like you said, uh, when you spoken with me and asked me to come tour, I was hoping that, uh, we'd also get the other, but I guess the other council members to come tour it as well. But, um, I know you said you were trying to build it up for the community to bring in, uh, new elegance to, uh, teaching, also, uh, I guess proper man. new elegance to, uh, teaching, also, uh, I guess proper mannerism, how to handle yourself in a ballroom for young men and women of the, the neighborhood, and how to handle yourself in edic eloquent, uh, situations. Is that correct?
Uh, we're just trying to lift it up. It won't be a cheap place, people can come and get drunk, no way at all. It'll be very upper-class. We hope we can touch with Seymour Johnson, have some of their functions there. Uh, even for the town of Golds, city of Goldsboro, become a whole meeting at our place, four blocks away. Come to a different environment, we got a projector, they can do a PowerPoint presentation, town meetings, love to have that there, so.
And I understand, you live there?
Yes, we do. Yeah, since two thousand and, we purchased it in twelve. One thing, uh, in twelve, we still living on Ash Street. And I jogged the property one morning before we lived there, and I found a gentleman walking away with my copper downspouts. He broke them off the house, walked away with them, and caught him red-handed. Anyhow, so we need to change that. And by police presence, lighting up the area, I think it's a step in the right way, so.
How many jobs do you prepare, uh, you propose that you're gonna, um?
How many jobs? Um, well, we've already been in touch with a lot of the caterers around here. Uh, we considered valet parking roughly, we'll need someone to market it, I think, four, four or five. Don't tell what will happen, but we'll definitely be employing some people to make it a reality.
Okay.
'Cause I have a full-time job, so does my wife, we need someone to help us make it go forward, so.
Anything else?
Sorry. Okay.
Would anybody else like to speak for or against? Good evening, ma'am.
Hello, hi. I'm a little nervous.
Don't be nervous.
It's all right, it's all right.
My concern is, um, when I first purchased the property on Mulberry, there was lots of.
Tell us where.
Seven hundred East Mulberry.
Okay.
There are prostitution on that street. Um, there was so much stuff going on, on that street. And I feel as though with what Patrick is trying to do, it's just opening up, uh, for, um, problems. The problems that kind of slowed down a bit, I think it will start all over again with the fact that with the entertainment that he's trying to bring to the property, it's, it's not a very good idea. And I also feel as though it's a selling point. Ooh, I'm so nervous.
Don't be nervous, you're fine. You're fine.
Um, I feel as though that Patrick is, uh, geared towards selling the property and with having that entertainment, um, idea, um, on the property will be a great selling point, uh, for, uh, for him. And he's talked about a win-win situation. Um, I think he is the only one that's benefiting from what he's trying to do. What about, um, me, the neighbor right next door to the entrance of his property on Leslie Street? Um, I'm very concerned, and I'm really afraid what may happen eventually, um, the property is sold, because I do believe that's what he's trying to do, is to sell the property.
Okay.
And that's why he's asking for this business, this entertainment idea.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, I do, but I'm so nervous, I can't think right now.
You speak?
It's fine.
Also, um, I had, I spoke with Patrick earlier today, and I was asking him, um, if he had previous experience with this type of business, and he said no. So, um, you know, how is he planning on doing this? I know his presentation sounds very, um, well-packaged in how he's gonna maintain things, but, you know, is it gonna be, is he gonna be consistent with it until the property is sold? I mean, you know, there's so many different things that, that can happen. I mean, it's supposed to be a residential area, and then bringing this to the area, I, I, I just don't see the win-win situation that he is talking about.
Okay.
And I do have children. I have a teenager and a twenty-year-old at home. He's in college and she's in high school, and, you know, it's, I, I, it, it just concerns me a whole lot, the, the safety factor for myself and my children. You know, I just don't, I just don't see, we have enough problems as it is. If it's not the shooting, uh, my daughter and I, we can't go outside and work in the yard without someone, you know, stopping, trying to pick us up. I mean, this, it's, it's, it's just, it's just awful. It's just terrible. So I just don't see it at all working.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Well, as usual, obviously, I got something to say about everybody. But I don't live in this area now, but I grew up in Wilt Town also. That area has been very busy with the crime element of it. You know, you get people coming up into these residential sessions saying they're gonna get these businesses and they're gonna be beneficial to the neighborhood, but then once the value come up and they can sell them, they gone. But these people that have their houses over there, the problem stays. It doesn't go away. And the people that are buying their houses and working this ci, this city, they should be giving consideration as to what they want around them and their children. No offense to this gentleman, don't know him, never seen him before, but that's a residential area. And in keeping with the fact that we're trying to get the crime down in Goldsboro, that doesn't belong in a residential area.
Okay.
'Cause in my mind, I see Piggly Wiggly, Herman Street, Lesser Street. No.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? One more time, anybody else? All right, if not, we will close this public hearing. The planning commission is here, they've heard all your comments, they meet in a couple of weeks, and they'll make a recommendation on this, okay? Uh, we'll move on to consent agenda. And the planning commission, like, y'all are not excused, we want y'all to stay for the whole meeting this time. Let's see if that works. Well, I got some power, don't I? Sally, you ought at least stay. She's the only answer.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, your consent agenda items, we discussed earlier, but items C through M. Again, your consent agenda consists of items C through M.
Move to it up. A second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor President Aho.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ann.
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. Uh, items requiring individual action, we have none. We'll move to the city manager's report.
Mayor and council, I'd like to share at least, I guess, some tragedy in the city's family. We've had two employees over the last week to pass away. I will tell you my, my time in working in public service, I've had one employee that passed away in that twenty-some years, so to have two in a week period is, um, is unusual. Very separate events, they were off-the-job incidents. Uh, but from our public utilities department, a young man named Alan Grady passed away. And then from our public works department, a gentleman named Ronald Jones, who'd been an employee with us for almost, well, I think, around twenty-eight years. So, uh, do keep their, their families and your thoughts and prayers in the coming weeks and months, and, uh, we just wanna mention this nice, and let them know they're, they're missed here at work as well, as I'm sure they are with their families, so. Yeah, that's all I have to share this evening, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Warmer, attorney's report?
No report.
No report? All right, if that, we'll move to, um, council member reports. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Um, just, just glad to see all of the community come out and how they're involved with our neighborhoods, um, keep up the good work.
Mr. Broadway?
Uh, no comment, sir.
Mr. Stevens?
Um, I'd like to say, uh, just, move your chairs, move them. Um, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to, um, all the constituents that came out to, uh, express their concerns in regards to neighborhoods and, uh, the village. So unfortunately, I didn't know they existed, um, speaking in, since they, um, were speaking about District One and District Three, and, uh, talking about some of the roads, 'cause when, uh, me and Councilman Williams and Council Foster and the mayor and, um, City Manager Scott Stevenson went out, we had went down, uh, Ninth Street and all back in Corporate Drive and back those parts of District Three, um, and saw all the dirt roads and went down a lot of those bumpy dirt roads that had potholes and everything, that had very little lighting. And, uh, so we kinda, we knew about those, but we didn't know, we just didn't know that the village had existed. So I'm kinda hurt by not knowing they existed and knowing their, uh, alliance, trying to work in with the city, 'cause I would've loved to know more about them and try to help them out as mu, as much as possible. As much as, uh, I would like to speak on, uh, things we've already gone over, um, I think that, uh, as we, we go and move forward, um, we gotta take in precedence of what's going on with our communities, and as we know about the crime, and as, uh, most of the constituents have said tonight, they have, um, one lady was talking about men come and try to pick her and her daughter up. Yes, along Leslie Street and Mulberry, there is a lot of prostitution and, uh, gang activity. I pray that we, even if we don't move that forward, we try to move something forward to get those, that area cleaned up, because, um, that is my home area, and I really believe that, you know, unfortunately, those are the things that we gotta do to move forward. I don't want to see people get arrested just because of being around the street and whatever and whatnot, but I would like to see things moving forward in a more positive way, so, um, rather regardless of what happens, I just hope we can, we can work together as a community to move the, the area together, move it forward. Um, other events, I think that we just, you know, I wanna say, um, I, I hope everybody, um, got a chance to go to that Praxis Film Festival. I thought it was a very successful event, and, uh, oh, if you didn't get the chance to know about it, that, um, you get a chance to come next year and know very much, know more about it and be, let it be part of the community, 'cause it's about growing the community and getting them into the arts and things like that, so. That's where I leave off, and like I said, you have a good day, and we all work together and we gonna move forward.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ham?
No comment.
Mr. Foster?
No comment.
Mr. Carter?
Just, it's always good to hear community involvement in anything, and I'm really proud tonight of the village to come in and making us aware of problems you have, and hopefully we can come up with solutions for those problems. Also like to thank the Boy Scouts for coming. Keep up your advancement, and one day it'll pay off for you, believe me. It's a fine organization. That's it.
All right. I've got a few things. Uh, one, I also would like to thank the Boy Scouts. I have a son that was Eagle Scout, so I remember those days, long days. But anyway, it's all worthwhile, so stay in there and get it done. Secondly, Ms. Barnes, on this Saturday, I, I was putting my calendar on Saturday, that's six o'clock at the Herman Park Center, the city and the county has their human relations banquet. So you may have a little bit of a conflict with that, so if you see some people that are missing you, that might be why, or maybe we do both, but I just wanna let you know that, that that is this Saturday. Um, also this Saturday, uh, well, I'll, I'll come back, let me do two other things. We got the city council retreat, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of this month. It's gonna be held at the Goldsboro Events Center, as far as I know.
That's the current plan.
That's what we've been told at this point.
I believe that's where it'll be held, yes.
And I guess we're doing an agenda that's not quite complete, is that right?
We are doing an agenda, yes.
So, so if anybody, it's a public meeting, anybody's welcome to come. So as we get the agenda, the, the clerk will have it, and we'll put it out for everybody to look at. The third thing is, and he's probably not gonna appreciate this, but I do believe that tomorrow is Mr. Guthrie's birthday, and he's not looking any better, but he's getting older. So we wanna wish him a happy birthday. Um, the fourth thing, and I, and I will read it, because I don't know who, uh, who may or may not know about it, who may or may not come, but this Saturday, at the, um, they're having the Founder's Day convoca, convocation at the Goldsboro Raleigh Meeting Center, and I'm gonna actually present the proclamation, but I'm gonna read it real quick in case anybody doesn't know, 'cause it's pretty, pretty important. Whereas the GDI School of Religious Education celebrates their one-hundred-and-fifth Founder's Day convocation, a time for churches, alumni, faculty and staff to fellowship and reflect on their humble beginnings, assess growth and expansion. Whereas in nineteen oh four, the Goldsboro Raleigh and Washington Norfolk District assemblies met in Vine Swamp, Kinston, purchased two acres of land for seven hundred dollars for a school site in Greenville. Whereas in nineteen ten, the annual assembly decided to sell the land to missionary Baptist and purchase a more desirable site in Goldsboro. Under the leadership of Professor Edgar Stonewall Lepoth Whitfield, the school visionary, the erection of the school began at the current site. Unfortunately, Pastor Whitfield contracted pneumonia and died before completion of the school. Whereas the school opened its doors in nineteen eleven for ministerial training and underwent several name changes, such as the Old College for Colored People, Goldsboro Christian Institute, and finally renamed in nineteen seventy-two as Goldsboro Disciple Institute School of Religious Education. Whereas the school's vision sustained and remained faithful in training servants for ministry and leadership, and in two thousand and twelve, the school launched a three-hundred-thousand restoration project, with vigor, hope and resolution to face the challenges of the twenty-first century. Whereas all current students and graduates of service leadership and ministry of the Goldsboro Disciple Institute School of Religious Education must reaffirm the vision with prayers and physical support. Therefore, I, Chuck Allen, Mayor of the city of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim Saturday, February twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, as GDI School of Religious Education Founder's Day Convocation. So I'm gonna be presenting that Saturday, but I just wanted anybody that might have an interest to know about that. Um, I think with that, anything else? Anything else? We stand adjourned and thank you for coming.
Thank you.